I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is in its entirety, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much for that. And we're on to item one, which is approval of minutes of July 22nd, 2014, ready to read and notice that waiving a reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and or adopted under this agenda.
Prove to approve.
Second. I have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Sure that's a five oh vote in favor. And we'll move on to housekeeping items.
Oh, sorry.
Yes. We should really gently tighten my spot.
Thank you, Mayor. For the benefit of everyone in attendance, please observe the following: silenced electronic devices, including cell phones. Audience members are advised that the chamber and hallways carry sound, so please keep conversations to a minimum or conduct them outside the building. Photographs or video recordings using tripods or other means that would be distracting are to be taken only from the designated media area along the west wall of the chamber. Members of the public wishing to address the council are asked to complete a separate speaker card for each item. Speaker cards are located on the table outside the entrance to the chamber. Place the completed speaker cards in the designated tray located by the deputy city clerk. When your name is called, speakers should come forward to the podium and direct their comments to the city council.
Thank you very much. And yes, a public comment on the housekeeping items. Mr. Berich.
For the benefit of the audience, I'm former Kattati Councilman George Berich. I've come before the city council about a year and a half now, speaking on this item, trying to remind the council that nowhere in the record that I can find has the council ever adopted, discussed, approved, any housekeeping items such as these. Very unorthodox for a city to just willy-nilly have rules drop out of the sky or come from the city staff's office and then you're just adopting them without any formal procedure. So I object to it. Again, I request the city council take upon themselves to do in other towns, respectable towns do, is bring this matter forward, have a healthy discussion on the matter, open it up to public comment at time from time to time, vote on it, obviously, so it's official, becomes public policy from time to time, bring it back for review, find out what you like, what you don't like, what works, what doesn't work, in the best interest of the city and the best interest of respecting constitutional rights and so forth. And also, I would like to see one rule in particular adopted by the council, and that is to see the council members refrain from disparaging members of the public during council meetings or after council meetings. And let me read you what your own ethics code says, item five. The council shall refrain from interrupting other speakers, making personal comments not germane to the business of the council, or otherwise interfering with the orderly conduct of the meetings. And at the last, unquote, at the last strategic planning meeting, council member Moore was heard of saying that it was important to have police officers in the room because he felt that some members of the council were mentally unstable. Now, we don't know who he was referring to, whether that being Neil Hancock, Eric Purdeman, who knows? But the fact that he would say such a thing to disparage members of the council when he himself is probably the most emotionally and mentally unstable person in this town, who has come to these meetings repeatedly over the years intoxicated and has embarrassed the town, is absolutely the most hypocritical thing I have ever heard. You need a rule that says you got to abide by your code of conduct. You do not disparage members of the public during meetings or outside in public. You're members of the city council, you have a duty, you're public officials, and somebody should be bringing Mr. Moore up on ethics complaints on this matter. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council? On the item of housekeeping items, I had seen no one. We will move on to announcements. I turned on my mic, turned off my microphone. We have several announcements. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Community Development Department at City Hall. It's part of our Kattati Open for Business program. The program provides personalized assistance and information for developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Run Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, you can contact the library at (584) 9121. The Kattati Historical Society, they seem, is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month, and Saturdays. And for more information, you can contact them at (794) 0304. The Kattati City Council invites interested individuals to apply to serve on the Snowman County Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. Full details and application forms are at City Hall in the city manager's office, or on the web at kattatcity.org. The Kattati Farmers Market runs from now through September. This free family event takes place Thursday afternoons in La Plaza Park. The annual Kattati accordion festival is set for Saturday and Sunday, August 16th and 17th, in La Plaza Park. For details, you can visit kattatifest.com. And also, enjoy breakfast before the Kattati accordion festival, the Lions Club Annual accordion festival pancake breakfast, served from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon in the Lions Club House at 86 La Plaza. Costs $10, and children under five are free. Guests who mention where they heard about this breakfast get two meals for the price of one. Uh huh, there's a good reason to come to your council meetings. Now, we'll move on to proclamations. And I have a couple of those, get them right order. And the first one is for a business that has been here 50 years. And as you know, we just celebrated our 50th year of incorporation just a year and a half ago. And this is for Arches Glass on their 50th anniversary. Did I say it wrong? No, I'm good. Whereas Kattati local independent businesses help preserve the uniqueness of the city and give us a sense of community, and whereas Arches Glass has been serving the city of Kattati and Snowman County residents since 1964, a milestone of success deserving recognition. And whereas Arch Stewart, founder of Arches Glass, contributed to the community by serving as mayor of Kattati from June of 1984 to June of 1985, and again from June of '88 to '89, and was also named Citizen of the Year in 1987 by the Kattati Chamber of Commerce. Whereas Arches Glass has been voted Best Company in Kattati for its custom-designed windows, doors, shower doors, skylights, screens, and insulated glass replacements, tabletops, and mirrors, and I can attest that I have a number of those in my house. And whereas small businesses are a vital part of any city or town, not only because of their contribution to the local economy and workforce, but because of their commitment to the community in which they do business. Now therefore be proclaimed on this 12th day of August 2014, the city council of the City of Kattati does hereby congratulate Arches Glass on its 50th anniversary and wishes them continued success and a huge round of applause. I know that we have members of the family in the audience, and Rick, if you'd like to come up or anyone else to say a few words, I'm kind of putting you on the spot, I know you don't have to come up, but if you'd like to come up, that would be a great thing. And then, those of you who get ready, there will be a photo op. But for now, if you have anything you'd like to say, please.
I would just like to thank the city for recognizing the business that my father founded 50 years ago. I know that he would be very proud that we've gone this far and honored that the city would recognize me. Thank you very much.
Don't go. Stay there, stay there.
Is this reimbursed?
No, 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 that was just an idle threat. And I will say that I know for many years, my dad, who's also passed away three years ago, did a lot of business with your dad over at the Green Mill, getting a lot of windows replaced, and right now I can't even tell you how many broken windows are over at that sad business that's been closed for a dozen years. And also, it's very interesting to me that when I first applied for a City of Kattati commission, and I don't even remember what year it is, but probably about over 25 years ago, and I was appointed to the, what was the name of that commission? I can't remember. Environmental Advisory Commission, that was the name of it back in the day. It's since changed names now. Your dad was sitting right here, and I'll never forget, you know, he whispered, "Hey, aren't you vintage kid from the Green Mills?" I'm an adult, how about that's okay. And what I'll never forget is the handshake from your dad. Man, those hands were huge and powerful. I mean, I felt like I had one little finger inside the palm of his hand, and he had it gripped, so it was, that was a really neat experience for me. But before you step down, I'll start down at this end, Councilmember Landman, any comments?
Well, I'm thinking usually people are unhappy because we have to time speeches. I bet this is the one time you were wishing we put the timer on, maybe go quicker, but we're not going to do that. Actually, just I'm going to say, I think the mayor's covering it very nicely. The pleasure is always to deal with your father and to deal with you. And what a pleasure it is to see a family business like that. I mean, if we think about it, 50 years, that basically a lot of glass. How many windows, how many homes, how many doors, there's a lot of stories there, and that's, those are the type of things that make a town a town as opposed to just another place to drive through. So I'm appreciative of that, and I'm appreciative of everything that you and your family have meant to this community over many years, so thanks for that. I'm very pleased to see this. And who knows, maybe there'll be a next generation of stewards. Have to get your daughter interested in that glass business, it could happen, and that would be a good thing from my perspective. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Stone.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to say congratulations for, you know, being a part of this community for such a long time and being an incredible contributor to the community. And so I just want to wish you continued good luck. Also worked with your brother at the DA's office, Scott, so I have a strange connection to the Arches Glass community, but, so congratulations, thank you.
Councilmember Harden.
I'd like to echo, it's really important that we have family businesses in our community, and your family does get involved, and it's wonderful that you're here. And community was also mentioned, and every time something is needed when we have a community event or a need in the city, I know that you're approachable and you're there for the community because you believe and love this community. And that's important, and I appreciate all that you've done. And I hope you are here another 50 years.
Councilwoman.
There's not much we can say that hasn't been said. I think it's great that you guys have been, have been part of the community and are willing to always step up. Congratulations on 50 years and continued success and involvement. Thanks.
So I'm going to give you just a couple of minutes to go sit down because we do have a public comment, but then I'm going to ask you and if everybody else, the rest of the family wants to come up, we'll do a photo, if somebody's got a camera or phone around here that's got video. So I'll call you back up in just a couple of minutes. Thank you. But I do want to open this up for public comment, and I have one card here from Erica. Please.
The card was in for announcements as well as proclamations. Recently, in your announcements, you kind of added and changed announcements. The announcements should be pretty straightforward, and it's strange that in the past month, last two weeks, there was on your bulletin board, an announcement regarding the Habitat for Humanity function itself in the park. What was peculiar to me was, I understand that you didn't announce it immediately, so it would have. But that particular function wasn't for Habitat for Humanity here in Snowman County, it wasn't for Habitat for Humanity, the five homes that you folks helped build here in Kattati. It was for functions, not even for one city, but for East Bay. It's kind of peculiar that, I don't know, I guess to some of us it would be somewhat misleading thinking it's on near Marquee, oh Habitat for Humanity, that's a good thing, went by Woodside, now did a new home, saw those homes, really nice, Mr. Landman has a nice picture up, Habitat for Humanity, nice to see, et cetera, et cetera. And then somehow we're helping some East Bay city. And the announcements, to some degree, should focus on City of Kattati, should not be anywhere else. And I'd like to say that you folks made an announcement, you did. But your announcement should be about Kattati, and to some degree, the Marquee should be about functions that are here. And I guess it wasn't misleading, but with a little bit of research, you have a city park downtown, and we assume that it had something to do with Snowman County, it did. So it should be, announcement should be as clear as possible. And if you're making an announcement here, it should be pretty much printed in your agenda because that's what we see, that's what we assume, and not wing it. In terms of proclamation, in the last meeting, I asked for information from you and or from staff regarding proclamations. I still would like that information. It should be easy for staff to contact you and say, there's that proclamation you made. So I again ask for that information.
Thank you very much. And I will just let you know that when the item came to the council to use the park for Habitat for Humanity, it was honoring Anna, who was a young woman who died, who was a Kattati resident, and even though she did a lot of her volunteer work in the East Bay, she was a Kattati resident, so we had a very clear tie to the City of Kattati. But thank you for your comments. So at this point in time, if there are any other comments on proclamations, seeing none, I'll go ahead and propose that, and if I can get the council and as many of the Stewart family that would like to come up and get a photo op. Is anyone here focused on it? Do you have a representative? All right. As you all saw in the paper, there were, there was quite the moving of this very large tree, we had a tree, and so we decided that it would be a good idea for a brief proclamation for Too Smart, and it's from City Council of City of Kattati committing Snowman Marin Area rail transit for relocating the Chimera redwood tree. Whereas Kattati's rare Chimera redwood tree was planted in Kattati in the 1940s, and its rare characteristics were discovered in the mid 2000s. And whereas the rare Chimera redwood tree helps to preserve the uniqueness of the city, and whereas the local community appreciates Smart's effort to find a new safe home for the tree, and whereas Smart made sure that necessary safety precautions were taken during the relocation of the rare Chimera redwood tree, and whereas due to Smart's coordination and efforts, the rare Chimera redwood tree will be a sight for visitors to see for new years to come. Now therefore be proclaimed on the 12th day of August 2014, the city council of City of Kattati, that's hereby command Snowman Marin Area rail transit, or Smart, for relocating the Chimera redwood tree. And just very quickly too, I'd like to not only thank Smart, but the rail contractors, Stacy and Witback Incorporated, Heavy Civil Contractor Herzog Contract Incorporated, PG&E, Comcast, AT&amp;T, Environmental Design Incorporated, Precision Crane, property owners who cooperated with the movement of the tree, Assistant City Manager Damian Obit, Harvers Tom Stapleton, and our very own Kattati historian, Prue Draper. And we will probably also follow up with a letter to thank you for Smart's work. So if you haven't gone down and seen the move, the tree is alive and not quite kicking, so please go down and take it, check it out, it's going to be great to be there for years. Okay, we are now on to approval of a final agenda. Do we have any changes? There are no changes. Now we are at citizens' business. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for items on the consent calendar. And I have one card here, and that is from Prue Draper.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm sorry I didn't understand the agenda well enough to get up and say it at the proper time. Congratulations to Arches. I'm really proud of the family, and I love all the work they've done for us too over the many, many years, as support of things like our historical society. You should see the crowd they bring to our barbecue. Woo, it's wonderful. Anyway, what I put on the note was, I hope that the city will think of some way to appropriately welcome that Chimera redwood tree. Perhaps combining a welcome tree along with the ribbon cutting for the new depot, if the two can be put, if that's going to happen pretty soon. Because I think it's, it's really, it's a tourist attraction for Kattati, and I think the place where they put it is a wonderful place considering that the railroad will be going right by it. And we hope it survives. And I want to thank His Honor for walking me home because I was passing out in the heat deck. I'm back to my car. Number three, I really want to thank Diane, our city manager, who now we know is leaving in the foreseeable future. She's done a wonderful job here, not only for the city. She had to come in and take over a job that she hadn't really applied for. I don't know if any of you remember that, but she did. And she's done a super job, I think. We're lucky to have had her as long as we've had her. She's worked to help get the city on a fair, fairly good financial basis. She certainly has been a big help to the Kattati Historical Society. She helped us, put us in touch with people that did free work for getting the room remodeled. She helped us with the colors. She made it possible for us to have that room, paying for insurance, paying for telephone, taking care of it, but we're proud to have it and proud to be in City Hall. So I want to thank Diane very much. And congratulations, Damian. Being an assistant city manager may mean that you've become a city manager like she did, because that's how she started out. One last thing, I want to congratulate Arches because Arch Stewart, when he was on the city council, was the one who initiated the plan of naming Kattati's new streets after prominent or well-known or at least respectable residents of the past. We had one man that was tarred on a feather, but we decided to overlook that because he was good at every other life. But anyway, I hoped that that policy will continue, and I was really proud of Arches for thinking of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Erica Kirkman. Give the receipt over to you. I'll hand one card, she did have two cards.
It's hard to reestablish a statement somebody that had less form than we did in the past. And I believe, I could be mistaken, if I sort of can be corrected, Mayor DeLisso, but I believe you were given credit for coming up with the idea that was similar to an older idea, and I think for years here, which you alluded to earlier is probably why you came up with it. Across the street, the Lettys for many, many, many years had sheep grazing, and these sheep tended to keep the weeds down, and when the city chose to buy the property through Open Space District, the sheep disappeared. And I believe you suggested bringing them back. It makes sense to have sheep grazing on open land. It's been done for some time. However, 20-plus sheep is probably too much, and you might be noticing at some point in the next month or two, the fact that there's nothing left. There should be reasonable management of all aspects in the city. Six sheep keep the grats down. Twenty are going to lead it to the ground to death and create more problems than are necessary. Again, I guess this is kind of linked to housekeeping. You may have two proclamations, there's only one proclamation on your agenda. Your agenda should reflect what's going on at this meeting all the time. You shouldn't be adding things, you shouldn't be subtracting things without the five of you voting on it, and usually there's some procedure involved, not just really doing it. So your agenda should start looking like what's going on here.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you have there, but I think all of our agendas have two proclamations on them. Can I see them if you don't mind? Where'd you get that?
Yeah, it doesn't. It doesn't. That's, I can explain, and I apologize for the, for the mistake. We did add that Smart proclamation at the very last minute, and we thought, I had printed agendas already, I thought that I had replaced all of the printed agendas with the, with the new information. So I apologize for that.
Sorry for anyone who didn't see that. Mr. Berich.
We are recording the meeting tonight, I hope. There's been some variation whether we're recording the meetings or not. Responding to the public. When council responds to the public, each one of the council members have a right, as council members, if you so wish, to bring any member of the public forward after they've used up their time to speak. You can bring, you can ask them to come back up, you can ask them questions and so forth, aside from their three-minute rule. I, it's been many, many years since I've seen the council do that. In the interest of better information, more information, and clarification, council should feel at ease to bring members of the public up when you feel it's, it's apropos to do so. Don't, please, don't be shy about that. I think a lot of good can come from that. Also, I want to go back to our strategic planning meeting of last Tuesday night. Again, as I said at that meeting that evening, I felt that, for the most part, it was a huge waste of time, and the gist that I got out of the meeting in the first hour, hour and a half, it felt like to me, city staff is doing everything possible to paint a picture for the council, that they cannot handle one more thing on their plate. And they're overworked, don't have enough time, not working enough days a week, I presume. And I really felt bad for the council, because I think you guys have some things that you would like to see done in this town, done differently. You want to go to the higher mark, you want to reach excellence, and I felt that you really kind of got to run around with the staff. It was kind of depressing to hear them make excuse after excuse that they just seemed overwhelmed. I also think there was a mistake in the strategic planning session, that you did not open up the evening to public comment, and chose to save public comment to the end of the meeting. And let me explain why. I think had you opened up the meeting and allowed the public to speak for one minute to make sure that maybe you would address something that we would like to see you address, and then close the public comment, then after the two-hour or three-hour meeting, reopen it to public comment again so that we could give you our feedback, we could let you know how we think you did, and what was hit on the mark, and what was missed completely. If you had that opportunity, I think you missed it. I also want to bring your attention to your ethics code once more on item six, which says, when the city council has not taken a position on an issue, neither the mayor, nor the member, or any member of the council will speak on behalf of the council. And I want to go back to Mr. Landman, he was mayor and held one of his so-called workshops down at the Redwood Cafe. He promised that he was going to bring to the council this issue of banning big trucks and maybe some other types of vehicles in the downtown area. He promised that, and we never saw that. Not only that, he was out of line to speak for the council, that he was going to place something on the agenda that he had not discussed with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? I have no further cards for the citizens' business. Anyone else? Anything? No? I had seen no one. Go ahead, go to citizens' business. And do we have any direction on any future agenda items? Councilmember Harding?
Yes, I would like to have it placed on there for us to have a presentation on the portability of Snowman County. They have already gone to a couple of the city councils, and I think that, well, I pointed everyone in the direction of the [inaudible]. everyone in the direction of the document, I think it would be good for the council to have a brief presentation on that, so that we can put perspective when we're doing policies on, you know, kind of just our greater community and how policies that would be set in place impact the community.
All right, so go ahead. Is there anyone else who has, Councilmember Harding? Portraits of Sonoma County by whom?
It's actually the members of the Health Department that get action.
Action.
Yes.
You want to add this direction for any future agenda items at this point?
Yes.
Very good. We move on to consent calendar, where we have items two and three. Oh, I'm sorry. Do I, you have comments on?
Yes, I do.
On consent?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I didn't have cards, I didn't realize I had.
I'd like to speak on item three. Right now, the United States faces a crisis in Iraq, a crisis at its border, and a crisis in the Veterans Administration. What do the Congress and the President do? Take one vacation for the month of August. Right now, Katati faces a crisis. There is no permanent financial director. There is no assistant city manager, and now we learn there is no city manager. What does the council wish to do? Go on vacation for the month of August. The responsible thing would be to call a meeting every week and work through these issues until it's determined that the house is in order. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Behrich.
I would deplore with Mr. Kerker. We've seen a record number of planning commission meetings canceled, a record amount of design review meetings canceled. We have seen these meetings routinely adjourned between eight o'clock and eight fifteen. By and large, these meetings are going about an hour to maybe an hour and a half long. And I do appreciate the time to be spending in closed session on very important matters they face in the city. However, you're capable of much more. We may disagree on policy, but we will never disagree that there's not enough that we can do to roll up our sleeves, reach across the aisle, find consensus, and try to work harder to bring issues forward that you all have said in your campaign pledges and on your campaign walks that you would like to see done in Katati. And I always hate to see you get through your terms of office without even touching a portion of them. Mr. Kerker is absolutely right. There's no reason to frame for recesses any more than there is reason to give city staff Fridays off work. There's plenty of work to do. This council, whether we disagree on policy, have what it takes to go the extra mile. There's no excuse that you can't dig down deeper and try to find constructive ways through these managerial issues that you have and policy issues that you face. The community is watching, they're expecting the most out of you, they're expecting you to go the extra mile. No excuses about how much you get paid or how little you get paid should be a valid excuse. I'm asking you to go the extra mile. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to comment? Okay, seeing no one, we'll go back to the items two and three on our consent calendar.
I'd move to approve the consent calendar. Second.
I have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Shows a five oh vote in favor. Thank you. Now we're on to the regular agenda, and we are at item four, which is the city manager transitional agreement. Where are city managers?
We need a mayor to walk seven in city council. This item is to propose transitional agreement with me, the city manager. I have been with the city for over eight years, and it has been a great experience working with many different councils, with our staff, and also with the community. During this time period, the council and the staff have worked effectively to establish long-term financial stability and to build a strong team. We can be very proud of our many accomplishments. I will miss Katati, but I'm confident that it will be in your hands. With the city poised to move forward with the improving economy and with our solid team, I have given council notice of my intended resignation. Providing a few months of the notice allows sufficient time for a successful recruitment, because recruitments do take three to four months, as the council is aware. The intent of the proposed transitional agreement is to provide overlap between managers to ensure smooth transition. I think this is important, and happy to answer any questions.
All right. I'm sorry. Do we have any questions from council for staff at this point? No? All right, then I'm going to go ahead and end the public hearing. And one card from Eric Herken, please.
Mr. Herken, I would like to say that the present city manager came on board somewhat suddenly and has done an interview, opinions, Draper's opinion, and from what I read, your opinion, a tremendous job. Mr. DeLloso, you came on the advisory commission in 1990, you came on the council shortly thereafter. You've been here quite some time. Many of your associates have been here, but not in elected office. You should have reasonable knowledge of what the transition of city managers normally is, and generally speaking, it's not a four-month transition with a two-month handing over the keys. Other employees have left, and you have changed lots. Other employees have left, and there's no transition whatsoever. So I would suggest that you look at some past history and at other city councils in terms of a reasonable transition. It's not reasonable to do four-plus months of paid time with potentially an addition of another paid salary if you bring on another city manager. The new city manager may or may not be comfortable with a planned, if you will. I would go with what's pretty much traditional, which is a transition someone like the president. You may have a transitional theme, but it's pretty straightforward, and this is something that's pretty standard. You're not the first city council that's ever had a resignation. So I would suggest you go pretty much with status quo rather than reinvent the wheel. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd comment on this issue? Mr. Behrich.
Counsel, the forced resignation of city manager Diane Thompson is long overdue. We've seen a steady decline in the quality of life and the economic vitality of Katati since 2007 under her leadership. I do feel that our city manager has been used as a scapegoat for a lot of the city council members, who take a lot of heat for their own shortcomings. I do not believe the city manager does much without some advice from council members, either on the record or off the record. I have seen, or have reasons to believe, that the city manager's office has been used as a political campaign headquarters for some officials over the years. I do believe that her office was to the unofficial recall headquarters in 2009. Many of the tactics and policies, I think, came right out of her office. I do believe that it would be unfair to the city to keep Mrs. Thompson on for the next four months, that I think that that would be unadvisable. We saw that the downtown specific plan come before us in 2008, 2009, rather, and the city manager, along with her staff, guaranteed the council that not one dime of the $73 million needed for the downtown specific plan would come from the city coffers. It would all come from grant money. I'd like to see what that grant money is and how much we have saved up for the downtown I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this topic? Mr. Kerker.
It's never quite clear what happens in labor negotiations behind closed doors. There are contracts, and there are privacies that are respected. So I suspect that as members of the public, we'll never quite know exactly what happened, but I'm certain that the council does. So with that, I would just like to offer some advice I've had after many, many years in the private sector. When an employee decides to leave, the period between their decision and their departure is usually a fairly unproductive period. Resentments come out, there's gossiping, there's lack of motivation, there's a lot of things that happen, and none of them are very positive. I think the city itself saw this in the case of Marsha Sue Lustig. When she left unceremoniously, three days later, the locks in City Hall were changed. Not suggesting anything that drastic, but I would say that you should honestly look at this situation. If you had division amongst yourselves about this issue, maybe you should revisit your doubts, think about what you've done, and really rethink the idea and the wisdom of keeping a person on for over ten weeks. It might not have good consequences.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment on this topic? All right, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring this back to council. I would like to make at least one correction. Nowhere in this document is, are the two words "forced resignation" put together, so I'd like to put that to rest, because that's not what we have here. We have a transitional agreement, and that is to work in cooperation with our city manager in transitioning out, and I'm not sure that their, the timing is, who knows at this point, but it's really hard to say that there'll be this overlap that'll take place. But at some level, I think that we can certainly contact our city manager down the road should there be any kinds of issues. Plus, we have a very talented staff that is still remaining with us, so I just wanted to clear that up. I'm going to start down, I'm going to go left to right. So I'll start with Councilmember Landon. If you have any comments, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I recognize we're talking about transitional agreement tonight, but I'd like to take just a second, because it is related enough to the subject matter, just to say a personal thanks for many years, at least half a decade that I've served, for you, good service to the city. It has been a pleasure, personally, professionally. First, I'm sorry to see you go, but that is the way these things go. It's typical, especially in a small city. You know, we hire, we've got some of the very best, and we don't always get to keep them, but that's, that's the way those things go, and that's okay. That's what we have to work with. Some of the bigger cities, when they go looking for people, they can look at the smaller cities and coach people. Being the smallest city in Sonoma County, we don't have those options. So, but the good news is we look at all our employees and wish them the best as they go on to better with their successes and what they've learned here in this town. Katati's a good place to learn, because we have a lot of fun here. It's a lot of excitement for our employees. So with that, I thought there was some good comments tonight, public comment about the whole concept of a transitional agreement. And we're in kind of an interesting situation, and it's different perhaps in a lot of private sector situations that many of it people have been, because we have two reasons it really strikes me as so much serious tonight. Number one, as someone did mention, at this particular point in town, some of our staffing positions are hard to hire right now. We offer low rates as a city. Despite what you may heard, all of our people are among the lowest paid in this county, so it's pretty hard to get people here sometimes. Takes a while. You have to hire, it doesn't work out, you have to do another hiring. So there's time involved. And with that, we don't have the depth right now really to put somebody in charge of stepping up and carrying the full load without having to shortball somewhere else. So some extra help is definitely needed, there's no question about that. Secondly, and this is unique, Diane Thompson, our city manager, is our longest-serving management employee in almost a decade, and city manager years are often measured much as dog years, so that's probably like 70 years of real-world experience. And in essence, all kidding aside, she is probably the single repository of institutional memory we have. Because the truth of the matter is, whatever job you work, you learn real quickly, it's not all written down. You learn it on the job, and you can try to tell everybody everything you know about it and write it all down, but a million questions comes up afterwards after you lose that key employee. So that's the situation we're going to have for a while. And with that, I'm thinking, I'm hoping to hear what's being said, and I'm going to support this, because I think we need this to ensure two things, two things I see as absolutely critical. Number one, smooth transition. We need that for the city, for our staff. But even more importantly, perhaps, now that we're in this position, we need to have a good recruitment. I think that's something I'll agree on, and I think that will really help that process. So just want to share those thoughts. Thanks again for many good years.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor's coming.
Thank you. I would want to echo that as well, to thank you for all of your help, and especially since this was all very new experience for me, so getting up to speed about being on the city council. I appreciate it, having that depth of knowledge as far as past events and how we can learn from them, so I do appreciate that. And I'm sorry for us, but happy that you're moving on to bigger and better things, and so that's always something that's challenging in a career, but also can be extremely rewarding. So I wish you the best, and thank you.
Councilmember Harding?
Yeah, Diane, I wish you the best in whatever it is that you decide to do. I echo the concerns that Councilmember Landon has. We do have a recruitment process that we have to go through, and it may take us a little bit to find the right person, the right fit for our community. So I don't think that four months is going to be unreasonable, and I do believe it will go by quicker than we want it to go by. So hopefully we will find someone in that time, and we can get a very good transition. Best of luck.
And thank you, Councilmember Moore.
It's not an easy task to be a city manager, dealing with five different personalities, dealing with people in a citizenry who are hostile, disrespectful, contradictory, downright rude, and to try to put on a friendly face all the time and deal with them in a professional manner. Believe me, I understand how that is. I think that the tasks that you were given over the years, especially in light of our economic collapse, were difficult, and I wouldn't wish that upon anybody. Fortunately, we are in a much better financial situation now. I think your role as city manager will bode you well, number four. I wish you the best in that, and I also want to reiterate that as chairman of the recall George Behrich campaign, there was never any headquarter activity at the city manager's office, and I can attest to that. Best of luck.
And thank you very much for that. I guess I could say something positive if I know I'm going to get a ride to the mayors and council members meeting on Thursday night. Oh, from Diane, why am I, well, let me rewrite what I had here. Yeah, I mean, it's, I echo everybody's sentiment here. Obviously, you will be missed. If I was on the council, where it was 20 years ago for a four-year term, there were two and a half city managers during that four-year term. So, you know, it's, this is one of those positions that people don't traditionally stay very long. Ken Blackman of the city of Santa Rosa, I think, was their city manager for 25-ish years. But really outside of that, I'm not sure, at least in Sonoma County, from the city managers I've known over the years, I'm not sure if there was anywhere more than six, seven years max, and more frequently far less than that. So thank you. Thank you for that. I personally feel, you know, there's been a lot of accomplishments, and in my humble opinion, I think one of the greatest accomplishments is bringing on some qualified staff people, which that was your job, that's what you've done, you've done the right thing. There's some great folks that'll be left behind, and so I definitely appreciate that, and certainly wish you the best of luck and everything. But you're still here, and you'll still be productive until you leave. Just, we're going to be clear on that part, and I'm pretty clear on myself. All right, so thank you very much. So if there's no further discussion or questions at this point in time...
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a move that we approve a proposed transitional agreement with the city manager.
I'd second.
I have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Shows a five oh vote in favor. Thank you very much. And let's move to item five. This is a discussion of possible action to provide direction to the voting delegate
This is a discussion of possible action to provide direction to the voting delegate and alternate for the 2014 Annual League of California Cities Business Meeting. Back to our city manager.
Yes, Mayor DeLasso, this is an item to select the voting delegate and the alternate and for the League of California Cities this year. I believe that Vice Mayor Skilman will be attending, and I believe that she is the only attendee on behalf of the city, so she would be designated as the delegate. The council could choose to designate another member of the council or staff if you wish as an alternate, as backup, but that's your choice. Okay. And I've already made my plane reservations, so pretty much I'll be there.
I do have a question, if I could, before I even open to the rest of the council for questions. So that, the one agenda item that they have that they're gonna be taking a vote on, it looks like there was a number of cities, maybe not too many from our area, but a number of cities that had written letters of support. Did I miss that we just didn't write a letter of support, or we not asked for this particular topic? Because it seems like, and I mean, we would have to bring it up for a discussion before we do that, but there might be interest on this council to write a letter of support. Just so the public is aware, the subject matter is environmental and public safety impacts of illegal marijuana grows, and it was, it's a resolution that would be addressed down there and then voted on by all of the cities in California. But there's a number of city letters supporting that resolution in our package, so I'm just curious about that.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that you need to just let the delegate and the alternate, because I believe that you've already done that, is that right, Tammy?
You did.
Yes, I read, yeah, I was, when I looked at this quickly, I thought that was the item tonight, that you've already done that. So the item this evening is really looking at the subject matter for the meeting and giving direction, and if the council wished to provide a letter, you could give us that direction. We can provide the letter, and it can be delivered in advance of the league conference, but the conference, I believe, is early September, so we will not be having a council meeting prior to that meeting, so we would wanna get direction now.
So we would have direction tonight on whether we wanna write a letter of support for the resolution or not, but we have plenty of time to get that letter out and signed.
Absolutely, and I think Tammy has a comment.
And I think two of the letters, there were some, potentially one of the letters are in the packet, because the league bylaws require a certain number of supporters for resolution, so that, some of those letters are there for that reason.
I see.
So, but we're happy to send a letter.
Sure. We'll certainly have that discussion.
I don't know, we have done that before, I don't think we've sent a letter of support relative to positions at the league. But there's no reason we can't do it. And just having looked through the letters and who had written them, I have a feeling that the league probably approached people who have more rural areas that have been impacted by this issue, and so we don't, as far as I know, have any federal land that's been illegally cultivated for marijuana grows, so. And, and the other way of supporting it is to provide direction to our delegate to support it, so that sort of ultimately, you know, the rubber hits the road during the voting, so.
Okay, and if that's the direction we take tonight, is just to give direction to the vice mayor, that's perfectly fine by me, I wouldn't have to have a letter, so. Any further questions for staff?
I thought there was one question for clarification. I believe the, the conferences in Los Angeles, on the staff report that's indicating it's in Sacramento.
I pointed it out to our city clerk, so it can be corrected.
Okay, so it's confusing, I'll look there.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Wishful thinking, wishing we didn't have to travel that far.
Um, any, like I say, any further questions for staff? Councilmember Landon?
No questions for staff, but I guess what's up to us to do tonight is essentially take a look and see where we stand on one issue. Fortunately, this time, there's only one issue. This is very, it's passed, they've had a multiplicity of issues, which we're trying to figure out. This is a very high-level thing. You did a short, concise description of what they're talking about, environmental, legal problems with the legal marijuana grows, but what they're looking at really is some of all their requests from cities with the governor, some funding to make that happen, so this is very high-level, very preparatory stuff. Obviously, this can turn out to be very good laws of randomness, or maybe not, the devil will be in the details, but right now, all they're asking for is backing support from the cities for the constant, some particularly noticing the ghost of our friends to the north, I think it is an issue for them, with that, I personally have some comfort support, and that for staff seems to be very logical, we can't even problem with that.
All right. Anyone else at this point?
I would agree.
Yeah, I think if you can get to the table and speak to the power to the, it's a good start.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open this for a public comment, see if anybody has any comments. Mr. Ferris.
Thank you. I would assume sending a delegate to the convention is gonna require some city funds to put our delegate up at the hotel, or maybe a registration fee and so forth. When I was on the council, I was sent to new councilmember and mayor's convention, the cost of that was approximately a thousand dollars. We also sent a city manager as well, which costs a thousand dollars for her to attend that as well. I would ask you to be very careful, because when I went to the convention, Mrs. Thompson did not attend her conferences that she was registered for. She was busy up in her hotel room writing press releases, hard at work, and missed her classes. I asked her why she didn't go to her classes, and she said, because of these press releases, and I can go another time, I can go next year, which I think she did, she took her a couple of classes a year or two afterwards, but we take, we pay double. Okay, so I, I would apologize if you feel that my comments are rude, or they're out of order, or they're highly critical, but that's what citizens are supposed to do, supposed to give you another side of the equation, and be, and try to be as constructive as possible in speaking out the truth. So I would, for cost-cutting issues, or I would ask that you send our delegate and our delegate only. She's qualified to, to, to attend without the city manager's help, I don't wanna see us wasting any of our money. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this topic? So Noah, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I just wanna put just a little tidbit of perspective for council on this. Having experience with the illegal marijuana grow sites, we had, I don't remember the year, I wanna say it was about six, seven years ago, we had a grow site that had fifty thousand-plus plants in it. So that's devastation enough, I'm talking on federal public lands, that, you would think that's devastation enough, it's nothing until you actually go into a grow site, because what they do now is they terrace the land, so you're talking a natural hillside that has now been terraced, trees and shrubs are cut down completely, or they're actually pruned to about seven or eight feet high, if they're taller, because it hides the canyon and hides the grow site from helicopters flying over. There are dams that are built, and what they're doing is they're diverting water from streams that have federally endangered species in them, from frogs to fish, not the most cutting things I know, but they're important at some level. And then you've got these garbage dumps about the size of this carpeted area before the seats, just lined with plastic, and all of their food scraps and cans, and all that goes in a pile, it's left behind, of course. Finally, is the toxins, toxins that are not even from the U.S., and they have foreign words all over them, and I mean, fifty-pound sack after fifty-pound sack after fifty-pound sack. And I mean, I had the experience of bringing in a number of reporters over like a two period, and I'm gonna keep this as clean as I can since it's being recorded, but there was one reporter from NPR that I was with, who about twenty minutes into our hike, he turned his recorder off, he cussed, and said, I can't believe they did this to this land, and that's what's making me angry right now, and I just looked at him and said, you've got it, that's the story I'm trying to get out, and it's, it's really bad. I mean, it's one thing that it's illegal, that's, that's in its category all by itself, but what they do, and that's important, I'm not trying to, you know, downplay it, it's important, but what they do to the land is, it, it's almost irrevocable, and the amount of money we spent, we probably spent three hundred thousand dollars on cleanup efforts, and it's like, you know, we don't have that kind of money to spend, so. So I just wanna, I just wanted to throw that out there, that this is a real problem. It's a big problem on very large tracts of federal land where you don't have people walking around through the forest looking for stuff like this. And the scary part is, the general public oftentimes will stumble across this, and when they have fishing line with razor blades, so you can walk right into them at face level, it's a pretty bad scenario, so. Now that I've scared everybody from going into a national park, you're probably never go back, but it's just, you know, it is, it is a real problem, and I suppose it probably moves up and down the state and into other states, and it's not always concentrated in one area, but it's, it is a real issue. And I, and I think as Councilmember Landon said, this is just kind of opening up that dialogue with the governor, it's such a simple step, step, why are we even talking about this? Go have those meetings, really, I mean, come on, anyway, I'm done, I'm off my soapbox for now, and I will bring this back to council for any further discussion. Tonight?
We're just unclear which direction we're going.
Do you have your directions, Vice Mayor? I believe so.
That's just...
I'll wait to hear from the rest of councilmembers.
All right, so we, are there any, any further comments?
I was kind of disappointed, the direction that seems to be going in.
Okay, so Noah, that's all right.
And I'll just add too, when I was working up in Mendocino County, this is also a huge problem there with our federal lands, and they had a tragic shooting up there, which was one of the motivations for starting this dialogue. And I have a former colleague at the U.S. Attorney's Office, and she was one of the key people in getting the federal lands up there cleaned up, and it's just an amazing effort, and you've already painted a graphic enough picture for everybody, but it is, it is amazing and really needs to be addressed, so I'm glad to be able to go and take care of this.
No pressure, but I'm working on you to do the right thing. Okay, then we'll move on to item six, that is consideration of twenty percent mandatory water conservation, and we'll check to maybe look at that.
Thank you, mayor members of the council, since we are talking about outdoor irrigation. The item before you tonight is, was really triggered by an ongoing situation as well as a more recent event that happened at the state board, and the ongoing situation, as everyone's well aware, is we are now in the third year of a severe drought statewide. And then in response to the local conditions and the governor's call for a twenty percent voluntary reduction in water use, the city enacted a twenty percent voluntary water conservation resolution in February of this year. In Catan, our customers responded by reducing water use by twelve percent from January through June. That, as you know, includes January, which wasn't even part of our voluntary conservation period, and as you know, two thousand thirteen was also a dry year, so people had already reduced water significantly last year, so we're comparing last year to this year, so it's, our customers have put in a lot of, a lot of great effort to reduce usage, not only this year, but over the past couple of years. As of August fourth, which was when this agenda was being, the deciding was being finalized, Lake Sonoma was sixty-six percent full, and Lake Mendocino was thirty-four percent full. Now, Lake Sonoma is at its lowest level since it went into operation in nineteen eighty-three, and as you may know, back in the severe drought of the late seventies, Lake Mendocino, by Ukiah, was the only reservoir that was in operation, and Lake Sonoma, in many respects, was a, was a response to that multi-year drought that we all dealt with in the late seventies. And so that obviously, because of the size of it, significantly increased our, our storage capacity, which is a good thing now, otherwise we'd really be in a very similar situation where we were in the late seventies if we hadn't had that storage available. But Lake Mendocino is at its lowest level since nineteen seventy-seven. In response to this, the Sonoma County Water Agency, which owns the water right permit for releases from these dams, initiated a petition to the state, it's what's called a temporary urgency change petition, it's basically the mechanism that the, the water right holder, in this case, the water agency, can use to petition the state to make modifications to how the water right permit operates. The water right permit that they have prescribed certain volume releases based on what type of uris, and the, the temporary urgency change petition is called the TUCP, basically modified that to reduce the releases from the dams to hold more storage. That TUCP expired in June, and so they're back to their water right releases, as prescribed a lot of water rights, and the, the water agency, in conjunction with the county of Mendocino, is looking at applying for another temporary urgency change petition to again try to reduce the releases from the dams to preserve storage, particularly in the event that this winter isn't a wet winter, like we're all hoping it will be. Then the more immediate action that's recently happened is on July fifteenth of this year, due to continued, continued worsening of the statewide drought, the statewide resources control board adopted emergency regulations that, that would go into effect within thirty days of approval of the office of administrative law. And so at this point, the OAL has approved the emergency regulations, and my clock is ticking, and these emergency regulations would be in effect for two hundred and seven days unless they're extended by the state. The emergency regulations that were adopted basically have two main elements. The first is a series of specific prohibitions that would apply statewide, and in the staff report, there's a table that lists, in our, in our water waste ordinance, we have a series of prohibitions that apply year-round, and this ordinance was adopted back in two thousand five, I believe, so it's been in effect for a long time. The, the state emergency regulations are matched up in the table to the ones that we have adopted since two thousand five. So in some places in the state, some water providers don't have restrictions of any type, at any time, at any time of the year, so that's the reason why the state water board included these specific prohibitions. For us, it's not an issue, because we've already had them, and we've had them for close to ten years now. The other part of the emergency regulations dealt with invoking mandatory outdoor water restrictions, and for water suppliers that, that have emergency contingency plans for water supply, it basically just says that they have to invoke the mandatory step of their emergency regulations that restrict outdoor water irrigation. The state board is targeting outdoor water use, because that's a large driver of water use, including the summer months, and it's viewed as not a health and safety use of water, it's a more discretionary use of waters, that's why they targeted it in the emergency regulations. The emergency regulations also have a provision for small retailers, retailers that have less than three thousand service connections or deliver less than three thousand acre feet of water per year, which technically the, the city of Catan would fall under, we would be the only, we're the only retailer in the water agency's delivery area that would fall under that specific provision. Everyone else has more than three thousand service connections, they'd fall under the other provision. And after, after drafting this agenda, there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of back and forth and clarifications that have been coming out of the state, and we had talked with the staff people at the state board who drafted these regulations to get more clarity on what exactly it was they're looking for, and, and as a result, you do have a resolution just before you with some red line strikeout changes that I think further clarify what the intent of the mandatory water conservation restrictions are, and it's based on the clarifications both from the state board, as well as the, the, the people doing the regional outreach and ensuring that we are consistent with the regional message that's been put out there from the Sonoma River Water Safety Partnership. And going to this proposed resolution, the, the recommendation is still that the stage two mandatory water conservation stage be invoked, which is the twenty percent mandatory stage, it's the first mandatory stage that the city has, and it's modified by this resolution to focus on outdoor irrigation specifically. And the items that are in here are largely taken from our existing ordinance, but they're modified a little bit, and I'll point out where the modifications are, but the, the general idea is that it would limit, it would limit irrigation to only evening hours, where you don't have as much evaporation or water loss from irrigation. It requires people to inspect their irrigation systems and repair leaks and make sure the spray heads are properly, you know, aligned, not spraying out. spray heads are properly aligned, not spraying out and streaming, that sort of thing. Vary the minutes and the runtime on their patrollers so that it doesn't overwater to flood the landscape areas. And adjust irrigation cycle length to accomplish the same goal. And then those are all pretty much straight out of existing ordinance for the 20% stage. The thing, the, the area that's been added to, to focus it on the outdoor irrigation specifically is item E under the res, the proposed resolution. And that says any lawn, garden, landscape area, tree, shrub, or other plant must be irrigated with a handheld hose with automatic, automatic shut-off nozzle, a water container like a sprinkler can, or a drip, for a drip irrigation system. And the overhead spray irrigation, if it's used, has to reduce, there has to be an overall reduction of 20% from the same period in 2013. And item N outside of M. And that would obviously apply to some parks. And as you know, from one of our earlier council items, when we had Siemens look at our water usage, one of the items they were looking at was a smart controller because that matches your water use with the ET requirement of the grass. When they looked at that, and as we know from operating the parks, we already do better than the weather-based controllers can do. So we'd be taking another 20% off of that, so the parks will be getting browner under this change. And then finally, it would eliminate a couple non-essential, or being non-essential uses of water. Again, this is straight from the ordinance, but that is refilling or initial filling of swimming pool and non-commercial washing of vehicles unless the washing's done with a bucket and then the rinse is done with a hose with an automatic shut-off nozzle. And then any non-essential use from fire hydrants and any non-essential, or any use of power for desk control in construction sites. And then most of these items are covered by the city's free water use survey. So it's further, under item, under number two there, it's to, in our outreach efforts, we double our outreach to our customers to make them aware of that, you know, that we have that free program that can help them with our outdoor irrigation timing and adjustment of spray heads and that sort of thing. And a determination that at this time, the preferred approach is to educate customers and use existing outreach mechanisms and ordinances to reduce water demand rather than using the finding authority pummeled into the state emergency regulations, which is something I didn't talk about, but the state also adopted as part of the rules, a $500 per day fine for people that violate that emergency regulation. And I think the feeling is that the preferred approach is to educate people and work with them. And ultimately, with our, even with our existing ordinances, we have the ability to do progressive enforcement all the way up to turning someone's water service off. And I don't think it's anyone's, probably anyone's best interest to start finding people out the gate, let the state board regulations allow. With that extremely long staff report, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
That's great. That would just, it generates more questions from us, so get ready. I'll start to add this in, Councilmember Moore, any questions for staff?
I don't have any questions on this. In light of the drought.
I do have one question. What happens, because you're going to compare it to the 2013 bill, what happens if there's changes in the household and such that the dynamic in the family, if you will, is different from 2013, which may require a different amount of water? Say you, you know, have a baby or you have another person.
Boomerang kids.
Or boomerang kids, yeah, yeah. So how does that work? Because it's kind of hard for them to also absorb a person and absorb an additional 20%.
So in general, the approach is that we, because we have, obviously, small staff too, we focus on the, the people that might be the most, the highest water users and the most egregious, you know, violators or sprinklers that we know about for some, you know, particularly commercial properties that don't seem to ever get to their irrigation systems, or they run over them with the lawnmowers and there's water coming up everywhere. And so that's the bulk, a bulk of it would be focused on that and the highest water users. We wouldn't necessarily be going down the line of all of our accounts and comparing them. But with, you know, if we were to ever do something like that, we would generally try to use like a gallon per capita, per day type comparison. And so it's more of an apples-to-apples type comparison.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Vice Mayor Sumner? I'm just going straight, sorry. You're chewing, thank you. Yes, I was going to go straight to Councilmember Landman, thank you.
I could jump right in here, yes, indeed. Yeah, so I, I think we, I just want to clarify because I think we got everybody's attention with the headline saying mandatory across the board, 20% water cut for everybody. And I've seen people sitting out there going like this. So I, and it got my attention too, frankly, but that's not what's being, that was the original language, as I understand it, in our, in our stage two water contingent, water storage contingency plan, we modified that. So basically, it's mostly modifications and controls over outdoor irrigation, irrigation manner and time and things like that, correct? That is correct, yeah. Okay. Because that's, that's an important distinction, because I think Councilmember Harvey's hit on a real key point, because we're not done with this. We'll see more of this probably, especially if next winter's not good. And the real question gets to be when we really do have to start doing even heavier lifting, what is the appropriate and fair adjusted way to do that? And it's difficult in a city like Cattay. And I don't know how they can compare it. It would be interesting if there was a way like use water spotting data, if we had that throughout the whole county, to see how they can compare it. Because I think our city's done a lot of work for years trying to be smart about not wasting water. And that's great, but the problem is then to come across the board and tell a city where most of the population actually is, be very careful. And you got to the neighborhoods, how many brown homes do we see? It's almost impossible then to do a 20% cut across the board, so it really does become the intelligent way to approach. It's kind of a per capita approach, so that's something I like to see. So, because the other question, I was curious, let's touch back on that. Is there any way offhand, having this, how does, do we know how Cattay compares to other cities in terms of per capita usage at all? On average, or better? Not important, a lot of spend the time researching it if we don't know, but it might be helpful for the next time we see this, because I suspect we're going to look pretty good.
Every year, the Sonoma River Water Safety Partnership reports on gallons per capita per day for each water purveyor. And Cattay's always definitely above average, typically among the top water retailers in terms of efficiency. And I'll also point out that some of the other water retailers that are on the top, near the top, on top, use recycled water for park irrigation, which is factored into it as well, and we do not do that. So we have a lot of irrigation that we can't pull out of that number that some of the retailers do.
Well, I just have to say, when I first saw this coming up, your, your first headline had some concerns, but I think you made some real prudent staff distinctions in terms of what the best way forward for the community have. Did that sweep off and try and find some more reduction without making something that's burdensome and impossible for people to do, so I'm supportive of this tonight.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sumner.
Thank you. No, I was, I don't really have questions. I just have more comments. Should I wait here? Can I?
Yes.
Does that happen more?
I just had to wait. I was here for the public.
Okay.
But that just gives me the mind, small talk. No. I haven't really opened the public comment, if there are any. Yes, please, come on, if you could.
Good evening. My name's Debbie Krasnoffsky. I live at 8860 Legere Way in Cattay. I do support water conservation efforts in my yard, front and backyard. However, when it goes very brown, I mean, we shut off our irrigation for outside last year. So I support that. So I don't know how we would additionally do 20%. Well, it's all those things, but I think you did verify that. I just want to drop, bring something to your attention, and I don't know how this would be approached, but for example, in my neighborhood along John Roberts Drive between Quebec Avenue and Legere Way, there is a water leak. There's damage along the asphalt in that roadway. I mean, it's cracked pretty much in different areas along Quebec to Legere Way. And there's been work there, I think they've probably tried to find where the water leak, but it's 24 hours a day. So it's weeping out of the asphalt and it's going right in the drain. So I don't know what the hell the city pursues, researching those things. And I don't know how many other neighborhoods that that possibly is happening, because that adds up to a lot of gallons per day. So just especially in these hard times, but even, even just the damage it's making to the roadway is unfortunate.
Well, it's critical to be the eyes and ears for us because we can't see everything. Staff can't, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else?
On occasion, call Damian because I've been out and seen water. Damian, there's water leak, so.
I'm still thinking, yeah. Anyone else who'd like to comment on this? See, no one? Rick, last chance. All right. Go ahead and close public here, it's fine. Yeah, it seems like there's, I know you have comments too, but like, whatever. I'll just, I'll start off. 20% at my house, never going to happen. An additional 20%, it's impossible. I'm already bringing a bucket into the shower and collecting that water before it's cold until it gets hot. I mean, and then watering the trees with that. I mean, I, you know, there's, either that or we have to stop doing laundry or stop bathing, probably not a good idea on either of that. So, yeah, and that makes it really difficult. I don't want people to get too nervous about that. And you know what? There's, I'm sure there's even more that we can do. We went to Drought tolerant landscape about seven years ago. Kids were big, didn't take a lawn anymore, got rid of lawn, drought tolerant, looks beautiful. It's great stuff. Very little maintenance involved. But I just, to me, it seems like, you know, some of, like in the industrial parks, some of the commercial operations, I've always wondered, why would you want to put turf in? Because there's watering, there's, you gotta pay for somebody to mow it and edge it, make it look nice. That's the whole concept behind turf. And I'm supportive of agreeing law, that, you know, that's, that's fine. But it just seems like, I don't know how many kids and their parents picnic at like Cattay Brandy's, you know, out in front. And I just, I've always wondered, it's like, you know, why, I think it was just this norm. And it's like, you know, we're going to build these buildings, let's do some landscaping, roll in the sod, and it looks great, but you gotta keep it up. And so to me, there's got to be this real paradigm shift, at least with, to get the commercial operations and stuff where, where you have the ability to do some kind of landscaping and what alternatives are out there. If anything, they're going to save money. You know, the maintenance won't be there, the watering won't be there, all that kind of stuff. Okay, I know, preaching the choir, I get it. So impact, I started thinking about the impacts of this too. And I had some concerns when I was walking through Putnam last night. I really noticed how green Putnam was in the soccer area and how it hadn't been green just a few months ago. And I noticed, and I know you take your dog through there too, it, it just, it looked really green, so I assumed the water scheme kicked up a little bit. But, but I will say, you know, it becomes an eyesore. People will short complaints like, look at Putnam Park, it's all brown, it looks awful. And so it's a delicate line, but I would also say that if that turf was to die, because a lot of it's probably annual grass, when the rains come, it's going to come back in a few weeks, if that. So I don't know if you guys have done any kind of strategizing, like for large plots like our city parks, because we have several of them, and they look beautiful. I'm not complaining, but is it time for a completely different thought process here?
Yes, we have. We're going to paint the grass. Just joking. We, we did look at it, I mean, we've looked at the timing schemes to try to reduce it by 20%. One of the things that was a problem in, at least in the initial interpretation of the, the draft regs was the two days per week, because watering only two days per week, especially an area that large, it's problematic, I mean, it's going to be dead, you know, if you go to that kind of scheme. But being able to do a 20% adjustment is something that I think we can work with and still keep it hopefully still usable and still presentable and not, you know, not totally brown. Because it's, you know, it's an active play surface, as opposed to ornamental landscaping like at a, on a park location.
Yeah, and I'm not looking for answers. It's just, these are just thoughts that I've had in my brain for a long, long time. And I just think, I really think it's, it's a paradigm shift, is what I wrote down. So we forget, I think that's where we have to go. You know, to me, sod and lawns came, I think they came from Europe, you know, England, when they settled east coast and moved west. That wasn't out, the West is not meant to be like that. We're too, we're too arid out here. Even in wet parts of California, it just, it makes no sense getting off that soapbox. Councilmember Moore, do you have any comments or questions?
I thought Miss Kellman, Councilmember.
No, hers are so good, Jenny's paper.
No, I would, I would reiterate that there, we might want to look at Putnam, because I did walk through there last night and the grass was really soggy and wet. And I thought, huh, maybe want to sprinkle heads, just going. But I thought, this isn't good for current situations.
Agreed. Councilmember Harvey?
So a comment and a question. So it, it was really enlightening at the WAC meeting when they, when they gave those numbers, you know, just how low things are and that they haven't been that way, you know, for Sonoma, Lake Sonoma, since it was filled and for Lake Mendocino since 77. It was just really, you know, very striking, this situation is really sad. So, you know, we've done what we can do at our house, and this year, sadly enough, we even cut back on our garden, which is really pretty sad, because one of the things that, you know, I enjoy doing is to give people vegetables from the garden, but, you know, we really cut back there. My question comes, I know we have that, that cash for grass program for residents. Is that also offered commercial, to the commercial clients, or is it only residential?
It's, it's both commercial and residential.
It is, okay. So have we approached some of these folks that the mayor talked about to see if they might be interested in changing out their landscape? I know usually it's the other way, but maybe we need to approach some.
You know, at this point, we have, we have an auto approach though. Typically, the process is that they request a survey and then we go out and then we get them a program that way. But that is certainly something that we can do.
But yeah, I, it's sad, but we have to, you know, I think we have to do this. This is something that we have to do.
Like I said, there, I mean, there's so many alternatives and, and like, you know, our front yard looks great. There's color in it year-round, there's active insects and bees and birds, it's, it's good stuff. Councilmember Landman?
Well, I, first of all, I just wanted to say, excuse me, Debbie from McGeary, I didn't catch your last name, but I wanted to thank you for taking the time to come in. First of all, I can speak for all of us, it's a pleasure when our folks in the community actually come. And the sad part is, we didn't tell Rick that, you know, we gave you that, that award, but you didn't have to stay for the whole meeting. Nobody tells you that, that's really terrible. But we really do, that's good. We really appreciate having you here, and I do think the value just shows because like, we have a very dedicated staff, and we've got a handful of people really courtyarding. They're not everywhere, sometimes, you know, you drive by, you don't see things. Involve citizens helping out, like, if it does make it work better, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you. You are very welcome. Please be.
That's good, we like it. So in, in going back to the mayor's comments, I agree completely, you know, I really hate, I kind of put a little wincey face down here when we were talking about letting the park go to really brown. But at the same time, a lot of our people in the community are doing that too. And I think if we can find that balance where it's still usable, where we protect everybody's investment in the park, because it sure would be foolish to let it die and then have even youth like, like over and have a huge cost replace it. But if we can find that good balance where we can generate some more savings, then I think it's incumbent, so I'm supportive of this.
Are there any other councilmen? Oh, yes, Vice Mayor Sumner.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. No, one of the things I wanted to comment on was that even though we've only been able to reduce as a city by 12%, I was really struck because I was reading that statewide, despite the governor's request for voluntary production, Californians as a whole use more water this year after the request for voluntary. So I was very proud of that 12% number. So it's not 20%, but it's way better than the Californian as a whole. So good job, Cattay. I was also glad to hear the discussion about the reducing at the parks as well, because that had been some concerns that people talked to me about when I'm at the Dogberg, like you were saying. So people do pay attention and it actually will be good if there's a noticeable difference, because then people can see that the city is doing it as well, and so that we're not asking them to do something that we're not doing as well. And then I can keep reiterating that to people when they mention it to me. And I'm glad to see too that we're doing more outreach and education, because when I was looking at the fines that were being proposed, I was thinking, how are we going to enforce this? This is going to take a huge amount of city resources, so I'm glad to see that we're going to try at least right now to work more towards working with people and seeing if we can make it work. And I love the idea of the grass to cash for the commercial entities as well. So thank you very much for all the hard work in getting this butt together.
Okay, so we've all expressed our complaints and concerns. Okay, so I think we've all expressed our complaints and concerns, which is great, and moving on to see if we have a motion to adopt this resolution.
I have a motion that the city council adopt a resolution indicating station of Kattati Water Shortage Contingency Plan as modified herein and specify outdoor irrigation restrictions in compliance with the state's emergency drought regulations.
Is that one checked?
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, extensions? Showed a five oh vote in favor, thank you very much for that staff report too. Okay, we're moving on to the city manager's report.
I have several items to report on this evening. The first one is a report from Chief Parish on the SITE operation, which I've mentioned at the council a couple times over the last month or so. And SITE is one of those police acronyms, and this one means combined intensive traffic enforcement. And it's a collaborative effort by the Sonoma County Police Chiefs Association. Our first SITE operation occurred on the morning of Wednesday, July 23rd, and we had six motor officers from Santa Rosa, Sebastopol, and Roanoke Park deployed at 8:30 a.m., I assume that is, right, Chief?
Yeah.
Okay. Around the high collision areas of Kattati. And according to Chief Parish, enforcement is a great deterrent for dangerous drivers. With all of the daily distractions that drivers face today, a simple reminder that the rules of the road need to be followed may save someone from a serious or fatal collision. In just under three hours, 40 drivers were stopped for dangerous driving around the community, and those 33 citations were issued, so a pretty active program. I also wanted to mention that LAFCO, the Sonoma County Local Agency Formation Commission, is accepting applications for the position of public member for the commission. And LAFCO is an independent agency created by the state, which is responsible for land and service delivery, land use and service delivery decisions in Sonoma County, such as annexation and formation of special districts. Applications are due on August 29th to LAFCO, and for more information, residents can contact LAFCO at 565-2577, or check their website at www.sonomalafco.org. And also, I think everyone is aware that our albino redwood tree was moved by SMART, we're very happy about that. And now that the tree has been moved and SMART has constructed the siding track across East Kattati Avenue, final construction is now proceeding on the trace telemetry and connected traffic signal that's sent your way. That traffic signal is currently planned for testing this Thursday, and if everything goes smoothly, will be operational this Friday. And lastly, this is more for the public and for the council, I wanted to just report on the strategic planning session that we held last week. During that session, the council reviewed their goals and objectives for the coming year and also projects for this year. And lastly, the council reviewed a proposed staffing plan, which included consolidation of some of our management positions in order to add line staff, including an additional police officer position and an additional maintenance worker position. And the input that we received from the city council will be incorporated into a draft budget that will be presented to the council tentatively on September 9th. And that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, councilman? Please.
We've had a few individuals that have reached out to us to apply for some different positions. I was wondering if it was possible for us to let those folks know that that LAFCO position is available, maybe they might be interested.
We have good candidates.
But it would be great if they at least, because I don't know that they'd hear about it otherwise.
We can do some outreach to some of those individuals, it's a great idea.
Any other questions? I'm going to go ahead and open this up to public comment, the city manager's report. Seen no one? Going to close the public comment, that wants to speak, that is. All right, and now we're on the city council reports. Let's start with, which we passed out last time down there, you know, point your appointment to councilmember Land.
I would bet you were going the other way tonight. It's foolish to guess at this time. Just one thing to report, kind of fun news, good news, we signed a contract as the, as the, as chair of the subcommittee for purchasing, for purchasing operations for Sonoma Clean Power, we signed a contract for one hundred, a little over 148,000 new accounts. That's a whole lot of accounts, and most of them are commercial, or, excuse me, are residential now at this time. And this is the remainder of the accounts that were remaining throughout the county, everywhere with the exception of Cloverdale, just yet, Pedaluma, and Roanoke Park. These will come online in early December probably. We're set to do that, we're looking forward to that. And while I'm in the chair, here's the fun part, the CEO of Sonoma Clean Power is at Kattati and lives here. The contract had to be signed in a hurry, he was leaving home office, he had it. That contract was signed in front of Kattati Park on a very nice sunny afternoon. So there we go, good things coming, and thanks to DG Mead, we're actually getting a job. This wasn't supposed to happen until months later, until the next year, but if you like irony, there it is, we're set to do it early, so we're going to go ahead and do it. Should be a savings for folks, this calendar year alone, I think we're looking at about roughly $6 million in terms of the difference, the lower cost for electrical power that we provide, savings in the county. And it's just amazing to see even it's just pennies on some accounts, that adds up to a lot of money that stays in this local economy, so we're kind of excited about it.
That's very good news, thank you. Vice Mayor Stone?
Thank you. See, Joe, 27th, I attended the Bonanza event in La Plaza Park, and that was just a lot of fun. The, the family members who had organized it were really overwhelmed by the turnout, and they were happy to have enough food to keep feeding everybody, so it was really a lot of fun to be there and to celebrate this young lady's life. Went to a chamber event for reopening of a pendered business on July 29th, so that was good, it's always good to have a ribbon cutting. Although they were surprised we didn't actually cut the ribbon, but we explained that. Recycle and reuse. Then I had a conference call for the water bond measure on August 7th, and attended the Kattati Day, the fair had a race in our city's honor, and so I was able to attend that, and that was, that was a lot of fun, to be able to do that, be able to be in the winter circle, get your photo taken, so that was very good. Although, you know, the horse will really cover most of us, but that's.
Oh, you're done?
I'm done.
You didn't use City Money to gamble on horses?
I did not.
Okay. Councilmember Herbert?
Well, I attended the Water Advisory Committee, I think you've seen the outcome of that, so I won't go into that. In addition, I attended a study session on Monday afternoon about the portrait of Sonoma County, and it was a very interesting group, because they are kind of having these focus groups, if you will. So there were council members there, there were people that are part of the various organizations that support all of Sonoma County. There were people from some of the large healthcare providers in the community, and there were even a couple people that kind of volunteered at different things. So it was really a unique group of folks. And so they kind of, a lot of these folks are going out and giving this presentation. And so they were sort of trying to give some of the feedback on what was working, what wasn't working, what they were hearing back. And so that was one of the reasons that I had asked that that had come before us. So it was interesting to hear some of the comments, you know, about, well, you know, those city councils, you know, they need to do this or that. Ernesto happened to be there from Santa Rosa, and, you know, he, he very, it was very well said, the way he said it, he said, you know, it's very important for cities and members in the community to understand this, because if city council members sort of bring these things forward, it's viewed as, you know, their issue, their political thing that they're getting on. And really, for us to change Sonoma County, it really needs to come from the communities, it needs to come from all the organizations that work with the communities. But we have to all look at where we're at and make steps to make those improvements, you know, it, it can't just be, you know, one or the other. So it was really very interesting, a lot of good input, and so I was happy to do that.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Moore?
No, I did have the pleasure of attending Kattati Day at the Sonoma County Fair, and betting on my one long shot, I happened to win in our third race, so that was nice. Of course, it wasn't city money, but, and it wasn't a windfall, so I couldn't, didn't even have to declare it, and that was it.
Thank you, that was too quick, sorry. Chief, if we wanted to do a little more revenue enhancement, every morning, this is no joke, there's a red light runner at the four-way stop of Myrtle and Old Red. I don't know if they're going north or south, they're usually heading south, every morning without fail between 6:45 and 7:15, because it's somewhere between then that I'm going to work, waiting to make that left turn, South on Old Red, without fail, a red light runner, four out of five days a week, it's amazing.
I told you, white's display would be helpful.
No, no, they're different. Are you kidding? It's, yeah, I don't think it's ever the same vehicle, my eyes are closed at that time, it doesn't really matter.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, there was a post-it note I was going to give Chief Parish regarding La Plaza, and the cut through of East Kattati and Old Red Highway, and the speeds are just unbelievably fast. I don't know if you guys experienced that from watching it over by arches, but it's just crazy. I mean, people have almost gotten killed just trying to cross that long crosswalk.
Sure, yeah.
And it's the commute hours, one day in the evening. So I've had a couple of citizens complain about it.
They're late, they're late.
Unfortunately, I mean, really, they hit somebody.
Yeah.
They're going to be really late when they're riding on little copies signing their names. So I also want to thank Public Works, because on Saturday or Sunday, I can't remember what day of the week it was, it was Saturday, I had already organized this in advance, that I was going to go and do some pruning of the willow trees, because we're past the bird nesting season legally. And so the little stretch of walkway along Myrtle Ave, next to the, where the park parking line is located. So I brought my bow saw and my loppers, and I made two giant piles. And I have never had more applause and tuning by horns from people. It's like, man, I wish I was running for council right now, that'd be awesome. Best thing to do. But I left two big piles, and I had told Alan in advance that, you know, which weekend I was going to do this. And I'm not done, I'm going to go back and do more, and I could have got my chainsaw to start, I thought, really, I'd done a lot more. But that, just the willow there has just grown so much into that little paved path that's right there, adjacent to Myrtle, so. Just want to say, in case you notice, if you walked that way, you'll, you don't have to duck as much. Although I kind of did it for my height, so maybe you do. And then, like, after our last council meeting, yeah, you know, lots of meetings, had an AG, an open space district meeting, but nothing really to report out on that. And our strategic plan, I thought, was a good event. Had a case of mono, and in between all that, I still went fly fishing for a week in Canada. I'm proud of all that, because it's okay to lie to your wife that you're really sick and say that you're not sick if you've got a fishing trip planned. I'm just saying, in general, it's okay to do. All right. With that, are there any other issues to bring up?
No, you're not infering that we have to do landscaping and more running council.
I think it'd be a great PR tool, is all I'm saying. We are officially adjourned.